Okay, Mr. 11.
Present.
Mr. Reggino.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
Somebody has two devices on.
Yeah.
I'm lucky I have one on.
That was me. I just, I'm trying to find out. Okay. Okay, we should be set now.
Okay, yep, you're the host. Okay, I'd like to call for the approval of the minutes.
I'll approve him.
Eight seconds?
All second.
Okay, we got a second. You want to do a long roll on this one?
You can if you'd like.
I don't see the sense of it. Does anyone want to do a long roll? Always do a yay or nay. Andy, I didn't hear you.
Did you say anyone wants to do something because I lost you? I'm sorry.
Okay, does anyone want to do a long roll or yes?
If it's unanimous, there's no reason.
I agree. All in favor say, yes. Aye.
What are we voting on?
Your minutes. The minutes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, because it's in and out. I apologize.
That's okay. We're gonna make a little exceptions for that. We all have difficulties.
Thank you.
I run an apple piece of a machine here and it doesn't usually like doing things with Google, so I'll have a little problems once in a while. Okay, so it's passed. We approved the minutes. Am I correct with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Want to make a motion to go into public hearing? For Vincent Argatani.
I'll make the motion that we open up the public hearing for Vince Argantini.
I'll second that.
Okay. Somebody's speaking there. Okay. I saw them on there before. I don't know where they went to.
Who has control of the mics?
Well, everybody should be muted unless the board members, other than the board members and the applicant.
It looks like Allison Argantini is not muted, but I don't see talking.
Here.
Any ears?
Hi, guys.
We're here.
Now we can.
I love this whole pop-up thing.
Gentlemen. Tell us about what you want to do and speak on your behalf.
Well, last month, we tried to, we were at the Zoom meeting and tried to, we wanted to get approval to put a double wide trailer in on my, on our property up there on Esopis Avenue and they said, I don't know, we asked last month and now they said we had to come back this month for variance because the lot, for for double wide trailer, I think I had to be, I don't even know. I don't have the thing in front of me here. What is it? I don't have the map in front of me. Go get the map.
Well, Gabby, can you, can you express to once again why he's here?
Yes, they need a use variance to allow a mobile home outside of a mobile home park or manufactured home, excuse me, outside of a manufacturer home park because they're only allowed in our six year OM zone. They also need a variance for the road frontage, the lot size, I believe it was, and there was one other one that I have to pull the file to know for sure.
Okay, that's why you're here.
Setback, wasn't it? I think it was a setback.
She already said the setback.
We met all the setbacks, I think, didn't we?
Yeah, she already said that one.
Lot size, road frontage.
Right.
And distance from the road because a manufactured home has a different setback requirements than a standard single-family dwelling.
Got you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Who else to say?
Yeah, do you want to get it approved? I don't know what to say. I mean, what do I got to do?
Cartwheels. You gotta do some cartwheels and
Is there
Is there anybody from the public that has anything to say about it one way or another? I mean, that's the use for the public hearings, so.
I'm asking right now. Unfortunately, I can't be heard. So is there anybody else from the public that wants to speak on their behalf? Or proving this? Okay, we go to the next step. Anyone disagrees with us granting this variance?
So, Mr. Chairman, can we close the public hearing?
Apparently, there's somebody else out there. I think we can. I will close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Okay.
So, that was to close the public hearing. Now we discuss it, correct? And then we just, and then we, then we give them the approval?
Yes.
I only have one, I have one question. And just because it's a mobile home, Vinnie, is this going to be like up, you taking the axles off? It's a double wide, right? Although it doesn't really, it's not really like that. It's really more looking like a house, not necessarily a trailer.
It's on a, it's going to be on a full foundation. They got to, they're building it with a frame on, excuse me, with a frame underneath. They got to set it on the foundation with a crane. It's going to be a full eight-foot foundation. They set it on with a crane. You know.
Technically.
There's no tongue hanging off the front of it, not like a trailer or nothing, you know, you know.
Right.
You are a manufactured, oh. There's no mobility about this, right?
Yeah, correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
That was a good question.
Is this the lot that's right, parallel with D and D Auto at the bottom of the hill?
At the top of the hill, yeah. No, it's not across from D and D. It's at the top of the hill, yeah.
At the top of the hill, okay.
Yeah.
I was there this evening and I saw it, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's, well, it's all snow right now, but there's some flags sticking up in the driveway when you look in the driveway, little orange flags and have you ever seen it before, what it looked like? It's like 300% improved from what it looked like before. There was three trailers there, two trailers, all garbage. It's terrible what it looked like before. I've lived here my whole life, 50 years. And been a dump the whole time and we improved it, you know, we cleaned up thousands of dollars in garbage to the dump and, you know, my son wants to build a house there, you know, put a house there. He just had a kid the last month.
Yes, how's that baby? I won't even go there. I'm sorry.
He's very good.
Congratulations again. I'm sorry.
I did have the privilege of seeing that, well, those guys are still working on it before the snow showed up. And I, like you have, I've been in Hinsdale streets since 1959. For, I mean, back and forth.
Yeah.
It is improved. You got it nice and cleaned up. It looks decent, like a nice lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Very nice lot.
Yeah.
Well, since I don't see anybody else and there's no one against it, I'm going to ask, is there any motions to approve?
Mr. Chairman, can we do two separate motions on this?
I was going to say three, because there's three things, isn't there?
Three is even better. I was, I just wanted to separate the use variance from everything else, but.
I jumped ahead of myself. I remember hearing that and I only see one thing. It's got to be three.
Well, it's actually, it's actually, we can do it in two because there's actually four variances. There's three area and one use, so we can approve the use and then you can approve all areas.
Area variance is one package. Is that okay with everybody? All the area variances is one package?
Yes.
One package.
Sure, if Jason.
Because I don't hear anything. I think it's okay. I mean, raise your hands if you think it's the right to do.
If Jason's good with it, he's the one that, you know.
I'm fine with two different, two motions are fine.
So what would we take the first one as?
A motion to accept the, the area variance. I'd like to make a motion on that.
Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay, who said that before, man?
Andy.
Okay, Andy. Okay, let's go for the vote.
I'll do a roll on this one. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. 11?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes. Apparently it passed. Okay, how about we have a motion to make the second one with the
That'd be the area variance, right?
That wouldn't be for use.
Yes.
Just an area.
We just did the area, correct?
We just did the area.
This is use.
And the use is changing from a
The use is allowing a mobile home outside of a mobile home park, our 60 zone or OM zone.
Thank you, Gabby.
You're welcome.
Yeah, since it's not, it's not going to have any wheels, it's going to be as a, as a mobile. That wasn't me barking.
That was, sorry.
That's okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept the, the use variance.
I'll second it.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. 11?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
You're all set, Vinnie?
Hey, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I don't like these meetings like this. I'd rather be in person where we could talk, but.
Vinnie, you're not alone. We're all like that.
I, I, I don't know anything about any of this stuff, but thank you very much. Thank you.
We're, I'm running this to go.
If you guys, if you guys call the office tomorrow morning, we can get you moving forward with the permits you'll need.
I'm sure my father will be right on it.
I'm sure he will. You're welcome.
Congratulations and good luck to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a public hearing for Keith Hughes. Use variance to allow a mobile home, out of a mobile home park in an HC zone. Is that correct, mobile home?
Well, it's a, it's a double wide.
Okay, but it's not with two wheels. I want to make sure of that.
There's, say that again.
It's a manufacturer zone, correct? It's going to be there.
It's a manufacturer home, but it considered double wide, basically same as Vinnie's. There's not going to be any axles underneath of it. It's not, it's not going to be on a foundation. It's going to be on a pad, but the, the company takes the tongue off of it and takes the axles off of it. So there's absolutely no way for the thing to be moved.
All right, I'm just making sure this matches what I'm reading here. Okay, I want to open a public hearing on Keith Hughes, Z395.
We'll need a second.
All right.
I'll, I'll second it.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Raise hands if you can't hear me.
Oh, I can hear you.
Okay. It's okay?
I'm having canine drama. Sorry.
That's okay. We're a lot less formal than the planning board, trust me.
That's why I'm not home, because I have nothing but canine drama.
Well, this is the deal. We just described what we're going to be doing with this. You know, manufactured home in that part, HC zone. You want to speak on your behalf? I would like to open this up to general public as well and one after you. Why don't you just say a little bit about what you want to do?
You want me?
Yeah, like you did last time.
Okay, so we want to be able to remove the, in demolition, the old mushroom plant that is in desperate need of repairs. Level that out and then we want to put a pad down and put the manufacturer home on the property, which is Zone Highway Commercial. So we understand the same thing like Vinnie says, you have to get a variance to do it. It's just going to improve the looks of the property coming into the town of Oster from Sorgdies. It's one of the first main properties coming in and by the time we get done, all landscaping, everything like that, we'll definitely dress up the property 100%.
Thank you. Any comments from the public or against? Do it once.
Just to comment on a phone call I received from Susan Davis, who is a neighbor. She was just asking exactly what it was he was doing, but had no concerns about it.
Okay. Third time? Take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
All right. So some discussion on the board.
I just want to make sure that the Dipalo mushroom plant is not on the historical register of historic places. Just kidding.
That would be terrifying.
Oh, my goodness.
For all of us who grew up here, it will be the Dipalo mushroom plant for
Forever.
Forever. But listen, if, if it is on the registry, if you want to buy it, I'll sell it to you for a dollar.
Does it still smell?
It never smelled.
Never smelled.
When we were younger, oh my goodness.
Oh, my god.
You smelled the horse poop that they delivered outside, but it never smelled in the building. The building was spotless and I, you know, cleaned all the time because they still had to be at standards to grow mushrooms for consumption.
Okay, okay, so let's change the road here, back, back to the manufactured home. How do you guys feel about it?
Well, it's actually part of it. That discussion that we were just having is truly part of it because it's going from commercial, so to say, to residential, that it cannot be used for commercial or any industrial use. So that truly is.
That part was, but dealing with the odors of the mushroom thing really wasn't. I'm coming from. I keep us on track of this thing. I mean, if we were together personally, it'd be easy, but I'm struggling with this new format here for myself.
Yeah, you ain't getting it.
Trying to keep us focused a little bit more on some of the things we have to do.
This, this is going to be your personal residence?
Yes, it is.
And what about all the equipment? Recall, we spoke a little bit about it. There's, is that storage next to you?
That's equipment storage next to us. There's actually two deeds on the property. There's, I called North, North deed, which is on Sorgdies end. That's what, when we're building on. And then there's a vacant piece of property that we're in the process of working on a site plan approval for that.
Is that where the equipment and
That's where the tree trunks are, yeah.
Okay, so is, just out of curiosity, without me pulling up the other screen, because I don't want to touch my screen in fear of I might lose this meeting. Is that your property also that, that parcel?
Yeah, yes, it is.
That's singly your property, that parcel that all that other equipment is on?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's two, it's two separate deeds.
All right.
And that adjoins your property that you're looking at kind of just for the residential property.
Right, right.
But it can be never reverted back and used as a commercial?
Yes, it can. We are not rezoning the property.
It's a temporary use that doesn't run with the property?
The use runs, but it's not rezoned.
So it's like a hotspot? Is that what we're doing?
No, we're just granting a use on that property that's out of its, its required use. If in the future they decided to remove the house and put something that's allowed in an HC, they can do that.
Probably needs a plan.
And maybe a special permit, depends on what it is.
Yeah, correct.
But it will not run.
So, so everybody knows I don't plan on selling it unless somebody comes in for a million dollars that we all can talk about it, okay? But it's not going to happen, you know, so we, we are, we are moving in there. It's going to be our, our last home, you know. When I'm done, it's going to go to my son and then whatever he decides to do with it, he decides to do with it. But like I said, I had, I did have somebody that called me up last month after we had our Zoom meeting last month. And all of a sudden, out of the blue, he said, oh, I got cash. I got this. I come in and buy it. And I, I turned around, I said, hey, listen, I said, unless you come in here with three quarters of a million dollars and show it in my face, I said, I am not interested. And once I get the variance, it's, it's not even close to being on the market. Me and my wife are working too hard to get the house, get the variance and build. We want something where we can go in and just relax and be peaceful. So, and that's what the house is going to be. So it's not going to be something that's going to, hey, well, we both found somebody moved in it and all this stuff. It's not that. You know, it's something that's going to be art permanently and the chances of it actually going back to highway commercial, like you said, they come up with a million dollars, they head, listen, everybody's going to talk about that, but it's not going to happen. So I don't see it happening. The property, you know, a building has too much damage to it to be able to be saved. And that was one of the biggest problems of trying to sell it. I offered to somebody for 200, they turned it down.
It's a problematic parcel, too. It's, it's a long narrative. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we move forward and grant the variance that he's asking for.
I'll second that.
It's bolt for the vote.
Ms. Smith?
I have some questions and some apprehensions about this. Yes, it doesn't run with the land. Yes, yes. And he's not planning on just being a flipper. My concern is, is there's somebody else interested in, in turning that back into a commercial building, but Mr. Hughes did state that the building was unusable, not repairable. I, I don't know if Warren was in there, what Warren and Jason's feelings are on this either about it going from commercial to possibly employment for our community or bringing the mushroom factory back, which was once used for. That's my concern. So that's, you know, to take something that could be used to enhance and improve our community and not be disrespectful in reference to your home. I'm sure it's going to be absolutely beautiful. You know what I'm saying? If we're taking jobs away or if we're taking a resource away from our community that we really can't afford to take any more resources away from our community. That's my apprehension. So if
Do you mind if I give you a little history?
Excuse me. We're in a little broke ball vote.
Oh, okay.
All right. So we need to vote. So what is your vote then? I mean, I'm confused. It sounds like you're voting no, but you said you want to vote.
I just had some more questions for Warren and Jason before you, you closed it and
I gave the ample opportunity.
Thank you. Could we, could one of them chime in? And I mean, Warren, did you, did you go in the building, Warren?
Well, I want to know what your question is because we're in the middle of a vote and you had a chance to ask the questions beforehand.
She's allowed to ask the question.
I'm allowed to ask a question right now.
All right, I'll weigh in. Okay, first of all, they don't pay me enough to go in that building. Okay. Second of all, we have a huge stock of vacant buildings that are in much better shape and in much better locations. So we're not, we're not at a loss of that. And like, like Keith has said, the cost to repair the building, it would have to come down. Okay, they just, they, they can't. So he can put his house there and in the future, somebody else wants to do something else with the property, we can address that at that point, whatever board we have to use. Because we're not changing the classification of the zoning. We're just allowing him to put his forever home on the property.
Thank you.
Does that clarify it for you? Does that clarify it for you?
For me? Yes, thank you.
That's what I'm concerned about. As long as you feel comfortable, you know what you're voting on and you have your issues.
Yeah, I wouldn't vote if I didn't feel comfortable.
That's why I'm asking. So what's your vote?
Yes, my vote is yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms., or, sorry, Ms. Turk 11?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
You're done, Keith.
Good luck.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Appreciate it.
Watch the Rangers.
Okay, thanks. Take care.
I'll get a call tomorrow and find out our next step.
Okay.
Okay, take care.
Thanks.
Here's your quick five minutes, the difference between a manufactured home and a factory manufactured home. Manufactured home is a mobile. It stays attached to the frame that it was transported on. Factory manufactured is a modular. It comes off the frame.
I think it's my wording on our agenda that got, that was the confusion. I should have corrected that. I apologize.
It said mobile home on here and I want to clarify that because that's what's on the agenda.
Yes, and it's not a mobile home. It's a manufactured home.
Well, we won't get into the, the semantics of what it's called.
Please not to.
Next.
Okay.
Does that mean I can park my RV and, no, I'm just kidding.
No.
Can I come visit?
Okay, we have a preliminary hearing. I don't want to massacre this thing because the nice gentleman from Long Island is on there. Z396 Busani Mobility.
Hey, Ewan.
How? Thank you for waiting for us.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for having us. Just to want to make one point clear, we have a, Dan Walsh is a partner of mine. He's in my screen. He's in the bottom left. And Steve Wilmer also is a partner of mine, so he's unavailable. I mean, he's here, he's listening, but I don't think he's got access to video. So thanks for having us. Our whole purpose, I don't know how much you really need from me. I'm going to try to give you the elevator speech. Our business is, we do wheelchair accessible vehicles. We convert vehicles, we sell vehicles, we repair vehicles, we even rent vehicles for people with disabilities. We have several other businesses in New York. We have two on Long Island and one in Westchester County in Marinerneck. Collectively, our company's been around for about 45 years. My father started the company. He retired in the last five years. And Stephen and Dan and myself formed a new company and purchased the old, the old legacy company. So we, we've, we've never really missed a beat in operation. All of our stores are functioning very well. And our goal now is to take our show on the road, so to speak, and get our services into that area. There's a, there's an empty pocket right now that needs some service, like I said. Somebody up in Albany and then down into, honestly, probably not too much further away from our Marinerneck location and then into Connecticut and Pennsylvania. So we've identified that area as a really viable location. We like the area. We saw the building that, that obviously we're, we're, we're acquiring about. It's easy to get to. Part of the reason why we need a variance is because the building, from what I know from my previous time doing this and three other locations, actually, there was a fourth, but we ended up, we, we, we different business angle, long story. We do need the, the variance, our New York State dealer's license. We are required to have a New York State dealer's license because we do transact in vehicles. And the funny part is, we really transact mostly about wheelchair accessibility and the portions of the cars, but they're attached to vehicles. So it's just, we don't really fit anywhere else. So New York State has identified us as requiring a dealer's license. And unfortunately, from my, like I said, from my experience doing this several other times, the, the um, local municipality, I guess is the right word, has to approve our use before they'll offer us and um, grant us this dealer's license. So really, that's what this is about. We're not gonna really change a whole lot. We did do some site plan modifications yesterday. Some doors in, overhead doors in um, to kinda make it work for what we need. But cosmetically, the place is gonna stay relatively the same. Um, and again, this is more of a, of a requirement. Paperwork wise for us to go ahead and do what we're doing. So.
Okay.
Any questions or anything I can, I can do to give you more of a good glimpse into what we do and how we do it and why we're standing here?
Why do I have a question?
Shoot.
Are you on R sixty area? Question I were having. Van conversions? Are you using loud pneumatic equipment or anything like that that may be? I mean, basically, I'm gonna say it's a loud noisy area that could conflict with the area that people live around.
So um, we, we will have compressors in there, but every time, all the locations that we have compressors in, we put mufflers on them.
Okay.
Um, and they typically vent inside the, the compressors just generate air and that noise is a muffler. It's usually inside the building. That's our intent in this place too, in this building as well. And in the uh, in the location that we have that I'm actually standing in, in Bethpage, Nassau County, if you did a Google, our property, our building is from the, it was built in the twenties. It's on the property line. It's probably, I don't know, about maybe fifteen feet, maybe twelve to fifteen feet from the house next door. Where we keep our, we, and we've never had any problems with them. And we keep our businesses operating between eight and five. We really don't, we don't do anything beyond that. We're not even open on the weekends. Uh, occasionally someone to be there for, for minor stuff, but we're not open on the weekends for active traffic. So I don't foresee that really being a problem, uh, or at least it hasn't been a problem in the past in the current locations that we've been in.
Now, when you get the material in there to do the van conversions, uh, well, two things. One, how, how the van is gonna be converted? The person drive it in there or does it get, the van get delivered and then you do your conversion?
So in a nutshell, the cars are converted structurally at a factory in the Midwest.
All right.
So we, we do occasionally get people that do drop the cars off, but it's by and large, we buy the cars and then we sell them to our clients, convert it structurally modified. And we spend our time and our shop's time um, fine tuning them, getting them a little bit more, you know, somebody with a disability, without getting too far into this, somebody with a disability is gonna need a, a, a device in the steering wheel. Or perhaps they can't use their feet, so they need gas and brake modifications. Those are the kind of things that we're gonna be doing inside the building.
Or the ability to come up for the ground to the wheel or whatever, because I have a disability.
Right.
The cap plate. What I was concerned was how do these vehicles get to your place? They take it on a, a, a motor transport or would you say something like a Carvana?
Um, honestly, it's, it, it all depends on, on how, uh, what truck is available. We have had both. We have had car carriers and then we have had some flatbeds with two and three, you know, carb carriers on them.
So typically you hold it to two or three vehicles, not, you know, a standard stinger which carries nine or ten?
They can't even fit nine or ten on because they're minivans and they're lowered. So they have to be, usually it's less than five and most of the time I'm seeing trucks with, with three on them. I, you know, I mean, they, it, it comes, but it's, it's usually not a full truck. They usually can't fit them on the truck.
Okay. Uh, and everything's contained inside the building except for maybe some finished vehicles and employee vehicles outside the building?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep. We have inventory that if it doesn't fit inside, we park it. It's locked up. I mean, it's, you know.
But it's a vehicle. It's not like all those parts storied outside.
No, no, it's a vehicle.
It, this, this is the space that's over by the soccer fields, right?
I'm not.
Correct.
That's correct. Yep.
Right, not quite. It's um,
Is it by Heritage Energy? It kind, or whatever?
No, it's over by Albany Avenue Truck and Trailer. I mean, there's, there's a few little houses. I mean, if I'm looking at it, you're, you're kinda like between the throughway and the old Sawkill Road that kind of ends there over by the soccer fields.
It, it's a dead end, right. It's a dead end and it backs up to, so the, the top of the page that, that Gabby's put on the screen is facing east. And that, and that's facing um, Old Sawkill Road.
I'm, I'm actually looking at Google Maps.
Remember that gentleman who came to us with the wood and everything else? It's in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah. It backs up. If you, you'll see it like it, you're not quite right opposite where those soccer fields are.
Well, what'd you say? North of that?
It's just a wee bit north. So there's really no house. Well, actually there are.
There is one, just one side, I believe.
Yeah, a couple of houses.
Well, my, there's residents, there's residents to the north and the south, but the ones to the south are farther away. And the ones to the north will be separated from their business by another building.
That's the, that's the building that's currently for rent? Is that the one that's currently for rent? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
What was the, what was the building used for before?
The building has gone through a multitude of different uses over the years.
All right.
Recently, it nearly became a paragon. They were, they were gonna, they were gonna lease it and turn it into their home base, but COVID hit and they left.
I remember voting at this where we turned, it was allowed, Mr. Stowe wanted to store his expensive antique cars in there. Then he didn't. He changed the custodial storage.
I think he still stores his cars over in that other building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't Pure Clean gonna go down there too? Is that the one?
That's the one.
Can breathe fitness maybe?
Yeah, there was, it was a fitness place for a while.
Yes. Yes, that was the last use.
Mm-hmm.
Was the fitness center.
So I have some questions in reference to this now that I know where it is. So you said that you pretty much, and forgive my language on this, you, you modify vehicles to accommodate um, that they're accessible for handicap accessible. So in other words, if, if I had a handicap, uh, if I needed a modification on my vehicle, I could bring my vehicle to you and you would perform that modification. So you're more of a personalized or you plan on going commercial like UGARC, OPWDD? What is your goal? Because if we say yes to this, um, and if you expand, because as people are aware of, OPWDD is um, growing in our area as well as UGARC and they're going to require additional vehicles. So with that being said, are, do you um, plan on modifying their vehicles as well? And not saying that you shouldn't, I, I think it's wonderful that you're here, please. So, but I do have these concerns because if we say yes, right now you're not so big is what it sounds like, but if you plan on expanding and then you have all these um, whatever size vans, mid, mid-sized vans, some of them are very large. Uh, surrounding your building, well, that's something different than what we're explaining right now. So, and yes, you're expected to grow, of course, you know, that's success. That's not what I'm saying, but I wanna know, is your goal to um, work with UGARC, OPWDD or any of the other contracts that may be growing?
So our goal is to, is to provide mobility to pretty much anybody that asks for it. So if OPWDD looks for vehicles to get converted, we're certainly not gonna tell them no. Yep.
No, I don't expect you to, but I wanna know how commercialized, how big.
Um, I, I mean, i- it's how big. I, I'm not sure that I can answer the question. Dan, maybe you have a, do you have an opinion on how to, how to respond to that? I'm not really certain.
Well, I can tell you that most of our clients um, that we work with now are non-for-profits, not big ambulance companies. Um, I'm,
No, these aren't ambulance companies.
Yeah. Just to give you, Yeah, non-for-profits on uh, bid work or um, uh, um, repairs or part sales or whatnot now. Uh, it's not a huge scale as opposed to uh, you know, Ford dealership or Honda dealership, you know. We're, we sell a couple hundred, you know, a hundred and some odd a year as opposed to several hundred, you know. It's a, it's a much smaller, each, each store that we've had is this about the same footprint that we're looking at now for the last forty years. And we haven't, we, we don't actually grow in our footprint with uh, with packing it in. Well, if it became that big, we'd probably open another branch between here and Albany. Um, but the volume has never been uh, that big of a concern. Or actually, our parking lot in our uh, Long Island stores is a third the size of, of what uh, we're looking at up by your area. So if you're worried about a lot of vehicles, you know, we do have customers, obviously, and the, the parking lot was one of the nicest features.
I have a question.
Sure.
Some of it, ma- may I? Mr. Chairman?
Well, you could go for it.
Thank you. Um, it, it's more about the motor vehicle use and I know that we've got Albany Avenue Garage that's just up the street. Um, and you're talking about how many vehicles you're gonna have being stored on site while you're working on them. My question is, it's um, it's really more about having the amount of um, fluids, you know, I, I just, you know, when you're storing vehicles, when you're storing and working on cars, there's a lot of uh, things that spill, things like that. How do you make sure that you're not um, polluting or doing what you need to do with the stormwater and all that other stuff with any runoff with any kind of a diesel or, or gasoline products, things like that? I know you're not doing a lot of engine work. It's mostly motor coach work, right?
Yeah, um, Dandy, what am I to?
Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, we have uh, all of our contaminants get picked up and we wind up with um, uh, receipts showing where everything goes. We store them in containers. We also store them in containers that they are um, that they would collect anything if there was a spill. Same, same quantity as, as the drums themselves or the container. Um, so we've never had that, that problem. Most of our vehicles that we do have on site that stay are new vehicles, you know, three to five, you know, that are displayed. Um, so the, and the, the, the vehicles that we're working on are normally picked up that day or they're in and out, you know. Again, it's a small volume kinda um, facility.
And how many vehicles do you expect to be working on at one time?
Um, uh, you know, I, I would say the shop looked like it was uh, uh, probably, I would say three to eight, you know, depending on how busy, you know, it could be, but I, I don't see a large volume in that area.
And you don't have a lot of vehicles sitting in the, in the parking lot waiting to, waiting for their, their turn?
No, no, no. Most of the time and we do um, um, most of the time we're doing pickup and deliveries for our clients too.
Okay. And this is all new, new conversion, right? Not repaired?
Well, it's, it's uh, it's, it's gonna be new and servicing that only our clients. So we're, we're, we don't repair standard vehicles, your car or the, you know, a, a vehicle that's not modified. But any of our, any of our customers, we take care of from front.
And you're not doing engine work and stuff like that? You're not doing motor repair? You're really only doing the kind of repair to the upgrades that you're using to make it, to modify it? Is that correct?
On that vehicle, we would be. If it was for that customer and they had uh, you know, something that needed to be maintained uh, for the vehicle itself, we would.
So if they, if, if they had a blown head gasket, then you have to deal with that or would that go to a motor shop?
Yeah, uh, we would. I do very few of the larger jobs. I, I would sublet a lot of that, but if they had a, you know, a, a a bad mass airflow sensor or something like that, so we, we would take care of it so that they're not leaving. The problem is that a lot of regular dealerships or regular automotive places won't take in these clients.
Okay.
So.
I just, I mean, there's a difference between being a motor vehicle repair shop and doing conversions. And that's my, that's my concern is, you know, asking it to be a motor vehicle repair shop or are you just doing conversions to upgrade these vehicles to make them handicap accessible? And that was my question.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, in our, in our volume, we're fifty, that facility, we foresee doing about fifty sales a year, right? Of those fifty sales, um, clients that will need service, we'll be servicing them. Um, we don't have a big client base in that area now, so it would be a, again, much smaller than your average gas station for, per quantity, right? And far less than a dealership, but we would be servicing the clients from beginning to end.
Okay.
Now after,
I, can I ask, can I ask one more? How close are we to the Asopus or the, the Sawkill with the water? Do you know? We're not, we're not in the flood zone, right? Is that in the flood zone?
I'm working on it.
Sorry. I, and I could pull that up too, but lately the GIS has been making, slow as hell.
It's that whole website there is slow as.
So their particular location is in the five hundred year.
Five hundred year.
Five hundred year. So a point two percent chance of it flooding every year.
Okay. Of course, when Irene came, that was our five hundred year mark.
Yeah.
All right. I'm, I'm only, you know, uh, these are questions that need to be asked because we have homeowners that are nearby and they deserve to have those questions asked.
The next one. Which is gonna, your, your questions are excellent, which is gonna make my question almost seem stupid. Thanks. I'm looking at your point, at your print here on uh, sheet number two and it says showroom. Uh, hate to sound stupid, but what does showroom mean?
Wait, there we go.
That's right. I'll wait for it to come up with Dan.
Up. There you go. So, I'm gathering from what you're saying, you're not gonna put a vehicle on there and sell it, but basically your job is to retrofit and re-equip custom orders. But I see the word showroom, so I just set off a little alarm in my head. Like, what does that mean?
So showroom is exactly what it sounds like. We, we, that's where we put vehicles for demonstration.
Okay, so you get,
And we have other equipment in there. We have a lot of the display models for, you know, displays for our hand control installations, our left foot gas pedals, our lockdown systems. It's where we do all of this, the show area to display the equipment um, in a controlled environment. You know, it's, we, there were times when our businesses were all about shop and all about manually adding the equipment. Our customers had to go and look in the parking lot in the snow and in the rain and the cold. We really discovered that our, our limitation from our building was causing a, a, a decreased dignity and just it really wasn't, it really wasn't equal. It, 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 it kinda, it flew in the face of equality, right? And these things are, we're trying to get them so that way they can be inside. They can try it. People come to us. You talk about OPWDD. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but they have, they run a whole program that does for disadvantaged children. So people come, they, they wanna test out different types of cars. They wanna test out different kinds of ramps. A lot of the people that are independent that use equipment to go to work every day, they need to see if they can get up the ramp in the vehicle. So we put them into an environment. It's nice and flat. It's nice and climate controlled. You know, uh, we're, we're actually obligated by our, we, we belong to a national organization that um, keeps us in the lines, so to speak.
Medicare, Medicaid? Medicare is funding, yeah, they have.
No, yeah, no, that's not the grape that I'm talking about. We have an internal industry organization that kinda watches over our companies and sort of sets guidelines and um, um, minimum performance requirements and so on. We're obligated to be uh, to, to meet our QAP standards. We're obligated to have an indoor showroom because it's a fair amount of, of, of disabilities that I could probably talk about for three and a half hours, but we probably don't have that kinda time. Specifically, one, MS, people can't regulate their own body temperature, right? It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a disease that affects a large percentage of our clientele, probably closer to about forty percent. They have the inability to maintain their own body temperature or regulate their own body temperature. And the heat just puts these people into an extreme exhaustion. Same thing with cold, people, as people with spinal cord injuries do not have the ability for their body temperature to regulate and the cold can put these people in the hospital. So we do in fact have a showroom specifically for demonstration and, and sizing up of vehicles.
Okay, my question, I just wanted to make sure it's not a sales showroom. You did a very good job. It's a display showroom.
Right, okay.
Okay, it's not sales. All right. That was, that was my big question.
Okay. Do you guys do any modifications before a customer wants it? You, um, you know, do you fix any cars prepared, ready to go in case somebody needs?
Uh, in, in a nutshell, no. When it's finite, for when it's specific for our customers, it gets done post approval. It does not get done prior to that. We do the structural modifications, the cars that we talked, just talked about earlier that get converted from um, from the factory, those we will store in inventory.
You store them there or you store them in a different location before you go to do the uh, the, the, the modifications?
Both. I could have, at any one time, we could have some of those vehicles in the parking lot parked, just waiting to be looked at or tried out or bought. Parked just waiting to be looked at or tried out or bought.
So it is a promotion, um, what the chairman's question was, i- it is. Realistically a promotion that, yes, if they like it, they're going to purchase it from you and and if it doesn't fit. And accommodate their disability, of course, they're not going to purchase it and.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's absolutely the case. It's what, it's, we use that showroom to get people to try them. We have inventory elsewhere, so I don't necessarily, I I I'm sorry, I potentially misunderstood you. I possibly misunderstood your question. Yeah, if somebody does like a car that they see in the showroom, they do have an option to buy it.
How many jobs you bringing in?
Say again?
How many jobs would it create?
Oh, uh, jobs and uh, uh, employment? We're hoping to get at least five.
It's one, five full time?
Uh, yeah, it's the driver that we have that porter role that Danny was talking about earlier, that one will probably build into full time by the end of the year.
Using local people?
Hundred percent. The drive from Long Island is not fun, so we're definitely going to try to use local people to employ the facility. Absolutely.
And how many cars did you think are going to be sitting on site? Like in the parking lot and stuff? You think, yeah, I mean, it's a nice parking lot. I I, that's a nice, it's it's a beautiful facility. It's a really nice building.
So are you talking, so all things considered, service and um, uh, inventory and client and and and. Uh, staff?
Yeah, about, about how many cars do you think you're going to be seeing? And I mean, this is really more, that's more a planning board. Not us anyway, so.
Be, I mean, with five people, if you had fifteen cars total, I think it would be a probably a lot for of the, for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, and that's all planning board stuff. They'll, they'll, they'll make sure you have your guidelines. Okay, so do do we need a a motion to go forward for a public hearing and see how things move? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, that's what we'd have to do, but does anybody have any more questions before we get to that stage?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Cause I always, I always forget.
I think it's great, you know, I don't want to put the horse before the carriage kind of thing, but I I'm pleased that there's any new business in this area and. I'm pro um accommodating people with disabilities because they're really overlooked and. So to me, I I really think that um, they. I I think that this is good for our individuals in our growing population of able people and we. Uh, um, many of us are more fortunate than others that we take for granted using our hands constantly with. Until we lose that use, so I think that I'm pleased that they're coming to our area. But I agree. Questions, thank you.
So please, could somebody make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Jason, is there any before we take that vote? Is there anything you can think of that we haven't covered?
Uh, I think that's it. Um. Gabby, does this need to go to the county?
I don't think it does. I was trying to recall if Pure Clean and Paragon had to, but I don't think they did.
I don't, I don't think so. So I think we're, we're set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion to go to public hearing. We have a second.
I'll make the second, I'll second it.
Excellent, let's go for the vote.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Eleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other bu- business that the board would like to take up, make up or talk about? If not, we could adjourn.
Uh, there's one thing that I, if it would be easier or possible to get.
We can, we can, we can leave, Dan and I can can leave?
You can leave.
Yes.
This is over.
Have a good night. Thank you.
I I was just wondering, like, uh, when do we get the information? Like, um, this last gentleman here, when did we get his information? That he wanted to, you know, do these things. Um, so that we could have, I could have earlier access to. Uh, to the information, you know, because I didn't get the email until last night saying, um. That that company wanted to come in and and that didn't give me, really give me time to, uh. You know, to do my due diligence.
Okay, I I can weigh in on that. So we're instituting a new policy where information will be sent out. At least a week prior to the meeting. This would include the minutes. And any supporting documentation for that meeting that you would all have ample time to review.
Okay.
So we're gonna follow the same format as the planning board then?
Correct.
Cause they had the same question.
I'm working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, originally I would send it out the Friday before, but that doesn't seem to be working as I had an emergency come up Friday and I wasn't in until yesterday. So that threw everything off, so from now we're going way ahead.
Okay, great.
With you going way ahead, are you going to put something on the agenda that we negates what we're talking about?
The the agenda is going to be posted a week before the meeting.
So it will be fixed then? I always won't sneak something in.
The the town code reads that all submittals for the meeting have to be received two weeks prior.
Prior, that's correct.
So that gives us about five days to gather all the information, just in case somebody submits something and they missed a document. They can get us that document, you know, in a day or so, and that still gives us a week to set the agenda and get the stuff to you guys.
Is there any way that we can receive the information as the building department receives the information because? Like Mr. Reggino said, I was running around like a chicken with my head cut off today after. Catching part of the planning board meeting last night on the, on the meeting, so. Can we receive it when? That off it, when your office receives it, maybe that will lighten also the load on Gabby. She just forwards it to us instead of following. To, instead of following the strict rules of fourteen days prior in case an emergency comes up?
The fourteen days, the fourteen days is the, is their submittal time.
Right.
What, what I want is, I want the agenda, I want every, so we're not repeating ourselves and we're not missing anything. So if we gather it all up and we send it out as a packet, we know everybody got exactly what's there. If I send a piece here, then three days later I send another piece. Well, then this piece gets sent. If I have a packet, I can verify that everything in that packet is on the agenda for the next meeting. And you're going to have, like I said, at least a week, we may be able to push it up to the Friday before, so now you're almost up to ten days. We're gonna have to play, play it by ear. Right now initially, it's gonna be.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Yeah, I'm thankful for three days. I'm good.
Yeah.
Just a little pass, a good piece of just news to you. You guys did a real good job of that digital sign and the board's going to be taking it up. Which is important. We really need it. The signs in this town are all going digital. We really need something to stand on and say, this is the law. This is what we have to do. We're basically just playing by the seat.
We do, I'd just like to know how I can enforce it. You know, how do I verify that the sign's too bright?
Oh, we went through this.
That's what you guys did.
Through this, so we'd design and the measuring meters and who is responsible for purchasing the meters, the Spirograph. Uh, not Spirograph, uh, size of meter, whatever it was called.
There has to be a lumens thing with some kind of lumens.
There's gotta be a way to measure that. I'm sure there is, because that's a problem I have to address. I know Jason's gonna have to address it too.
We're not the first town to look at it, so there's got to be a template somewhere else.
Well, we'll talk about that, Warren. We'll make sure that we have um the way to enforce that law.
Yeah.
Okay, because I do have a light meter, I had to go measure all the parking lots in the town.
I have another question, wait a second, um, Mr. Chairman, if you, if it's okay. In reference to, um, and it's really common now, Warren knows all the answers because I've questioned him to death on this. In reference to the tiny house community that's really popping up and and so we're really trying to encourage it, but. Should we start discussing maybe? Um, the code for tiny houses and Warren knows. Every measurement, every, everything, right, Warren? Because we, we've had this, but. You know, and Jay had brought up before in reference to storage containers and. You know, people are converting storage containers, they're converting whatever they can to um. Affordable living, so to say, and we, our town. Um, Robco and the other ones are truly um trying to utilize some of these grants. For tiny houses and to um bring this to life here. And I think it's a good idea, I truly do with um. With the cer- certain provisions and restrictions, so um Jason and Warren, I'd really like to um. How do we go about this before it's too late? You, we need some kind of guidelines or something? Yes?
So you want to get out and fill out the issue before it becomes an issue?
Well, it makes you think it's going to be an issue.
There's a lot.
First of all, I'll just, first of all, just say.
You, I I, I'm pro tiny houses and tiny house community for senior citizens. I think it's good. If if it's regulated and it's done tastefully, I think it's wonderful. I think it's a great idea, but.
Okay, so we we now have a building code for tiny houses. What you'll have to understand is that just because it's a tiny house. It's still going to be classified as a single family dwelling. So you're not going to just be able to put six of these on a lot. Because the single family dwelling has to meet the zoning.
So it's gonna have to meet R ten, R sixty, et cetera, et cetera, right?
Et cetera, et cetera. So you got an R ten lot, more likely you're gonna have one tiny house. Because you're not going to have the square footage to support the second one. So just because it's tiny, doesn't mean we're going to allow them to put them wherever they want.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I understand that.
Okay. That answered the question?
Right, we'll have for the question. I like the question. Okay, unless there's anything else, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Please, I'll make that motion.
I like that.
I have something else to do.
I want to ask, Andy, I want to ask you a question. It's gonna be dealing with dogs.
Okay.
So I'll second that motion.
My specialty, dogs.